It's 5 o'clock. This is calling our school broadside study session to order. This is a study session for presentation of the superintendent's learning forward plan for the fall. As sent out to the community, the we're this, we're hoping that this is kind of a two-part series. Hopefully, we've got community members joining us for this presentation. I think we have many. Hopefully, we'll get some more, too. And then hopefully, this presentation will answer most, if not all, questions. I would encourage community members, if you have specific questions about your child or situation, please contact your building administrators. If it isn't them, since you don't have an assigned teacher yet, if it's regarding an IEP or other special needs, please contact our special services department or their IEP contact person, as though they are the best people to address individual needs. I'm sure part of this presentation is going to let us know that that those all departments, but those departments in particular are working really hard to meet each child's needs on an individual basis. So there's no way to represent any of that in a large meeting, as it's all very individualized. If you have outstanding questions, we, the board will be hosting a linkage session, which is a fancy word for, you know, town hall. Please submit questions via email to the board website. I'm sorry, the board email. We will review those and then respond accordingly. If your questions are on an individual basis, we will direct them to the appropriate staff if we're able to figure that out. And what I'm going to do is we're going to have the presentation. We could either stop after each section for questions, but my strong suggestion is to get kind of through the whole thing, because I don't want to rush through the end of it, as we often do. I'm then going to hold board directors to questions only. We have a very limited amount of time, and we just need really precise questions so that we can all benefit from our administrators answering them. I don't know that we're going to get through all of them, but we're going to do the best we can, and that's the way that I think that we can be the most efficient. So with that, I will transfer to Superintendent Kloski.
Thank you, President Larry. I did want to ask if the board directors had the opportunity to look at the attached resolution. It does have draft written all over it, but I wanted you to be able to take a look at that, and if you had any questions on that prior to being on the, for the approval at the actual meeting, which will be on the 13th, I wanted to make sure you had the opportunity to view that as well. And then the other document that is attached is, we wanted you to see the document that staff will be filling out to send to OSPI. It's a basically a fill-in-the-box kind of document, but we wanted you to see the categories that OSPI is requiring districts to respond to for their reopening plans. So we'll be completing that and submitting it so that it gets to OSPI and the State Board of Education by August 19th is our timeline for that. Any questions on either of those two? Seeing some shakes, great. All right, Andries, let's go ahead and go to the slide deck then. So here we are, opening, opening schools or reopening schools in August 2020. Who'd believe that this is where we would be when we closed on March 12th, discussing how we were going to reopen? But I do have to say, I do remember being in a meeting on, I believe it was March 11th, and one of our leadership team posed the question at that time and said, we've got to start talking about reopening. So we, this has been on the minds of our leadership team since the day we closed, is how was the opening going to occur? So, next slide. So what we really tried to do is utilize our values, vision, and mission as the center point for everything that we've been working through in this reopening plan, with keeping students at the center as, as our priority, especially in these challenging times. Go ahead, Andries. So sending some goals for the opening or the reopening, keeping students as a priority, making sure that we're safeguarding health and safety of our students, our staff, and the community. We really have a strong desire and priority to return to in-person learning as soon as possible, and we are prioritizing our youngest learners and our students with our most significant needs to be the first as we phase in our reopening. We have worked really hard to develop learning models that offer flexible responses to the changing conditions, and they're going to continue to change. We had a strong priority of empowering staff to engage students in a more consistent and robust synchronous learning than we had in the spring when we had our emergency closure. We heard loud and clear from our parents and our community that they had a lot of pieces that didn't work, and this was the desire. As we, if we have to have a remote, here's where we want it to be. And we really want to partner with our parents and community in support of the whole child. You see this in everything. We know that if we aren't taking care of the social, emotional, and the mental health of our students, then the learning doesn't occur. So we've had to consider that in all of our planning as well. So our timeline, I mentioned earlier on March 11th, some of us already were talking about what reopening would look like, and then when it escalated to we weren't coming back for the rest of the year, then we were really deep in those conversations, setting up our work groups, which really have worked through June and July in our reopening plan development. On the 24th, we made the decision to enter the red learning phase, which is our remote learning. On the 28th, we did an all-staff webinar. We had a great turnout for that and lots of questions that we responded to and turned back to the staff. We did our webinar on the 30th, and you might have seen that that Q and A came back from that. We had a lot of questions that were asked, and it took a great effort from everyone on the team to get those answered and kind of compiled into similar groupings for questions. That's now been published and is on our website. We're here tonight, as the board had determined that they really wanted to have lots of opportunity to see the plan and get input and make sure that everyone's really aware of it before that approval of it. So we're here tonight with the first draft. We'll have the linkage, as President Larry mentioned, and then the 13th, your first regular meeting in August, a meeting to discuss and hopefully approve the plan and the resolution that has to go with it. And then on the 19th, we will have to submit the plan to OSPI. So we divided this presentation into the groupings that are in the OSPI template, so starting with health and safety. So there are some mandatory health and safety requirements for when we get to in-person learning, and we'll talk about those in a couple of slides. We do have to identify our local health officer, and it is Patty Hayes, who is the director King County. In fact, Dr. Rundle and I spent about an hour today in a Zoom meeting with Patty and two of her colleagues at Department of Health, and feel like we have a really good working relationship that we're going to be able to navigate this new world for schools and frankly, for Department of Health as well. They've been a great support for us when we've contacted them. They have really provided us the support that they've had. I will be the primary point of contact as well in working with them, particularly when it comes to, I know one of the greatest concerns for everyone is what happens when we're in person if we do have a COVID case. So Patty and I will be the, the point people for that. Our human resources department, this is part of the template, and they've already started this in working with staff who identify themselves as being in the increased risk category and are working through how to facilitate assignments as feasible. If you happen to have come by the district office, you would have to have an appointment, and you'll now have to have a health attestation, but you will see our signage, which is also now going up around all of our sites as we start to open up for a few employees to begin our registration process. So we have signs about face coverings, physical distancing, hand washing, and sanitizing. And I did want to point out here something that actually the Seattle King County Department of Health was very pleased to hear when I told them that Mercer Island School District has always had a full-time nurse for each school. That isn't the same in every district, and that's continued to be a priority for Mercer Island School District, and it has been certainly a benefit for us in this pandemic. It is all the time for our students to have that access to a nurse, but even more so during this time, and they have been just great resources in our work groups. So as I said, our buildings are open by appointment only for anyone who is non-staff, but even staff have some requirements. They have to have a health attestation. Anyone entering our facilities for longer than 15 minutes, so delivery men don't have to do that, but any staff would have to do that. Our staff work stations are six feet apart at least. Our ventilation, our air exchange will, is using lots of outside air as much as possible, even in our older buildings that have older systems. I know that Tony will appreciate when I remind that as the weather gets cooler, like it was today, we can pump lots of air from the outside in, but the, the problem is heating it when it gets cooler. So it might be a little chilly in our buildings as we're pumping that fresh air in. Our gathering spaces, so this is particularly for our, our staff, so things like staff rooms and copy rooms, work rooms, that are great collaborative spaces, will have to really be strict about maintaining physical distancing there. We'll have lots of signage and our, we'll be reminding each other, and our, our leadership team will be monitoring those closely. Our staff meetings will be by Zoom. It's the safer way for particularly adults, especially if there's more than five, to be having their meetings. Sanitizing stations are being strategically located in our buildings. Again, if you come into our district office here, you have one that you cannot miss. You walk almost right into it as you come in the door, so really making those in a prominent place. So when in-person learning is possible, we will have for each building proper physical distancing. There will be dedicated entrances and exits, depending on where students are located in the building and how they're coming to school. Each site will have a very clear student drop-off and pickup plan that will acknowledge physical distancing. We do have new digital thermometers that are available at each site. We purchased many before they became too hard to get. Our classrooms, hallways, and communal spaces will be configured to provide for required physical distancing. As we get more and more students in, we will need to adjust accordingly. Potentially, some of our more crowded spaces could have to have one-way hallways as we get more students in, as we go through the phases. Our students will be in cohorts for learning as much as possible, especially at the elementary level. This will include their recess time, their lunchtime. This is a very clear guidance from Department of Health for contact tracing reasons to keep our students in cohorts. And we've heard this a lot from our community, and we agree that as weather permits, our outdoor spaces will be used as frequently as possible for, for learning activities. In fact, I was meeting with a principal today, and we were talking about, could we use some of them for some small staff meetings as well? And I know that our high school team has taken advantage of the nice weather and had some outdoor safely-distanced mask-wearing meetings at our high school. So when we get to in-person learning, field trips, large gatherings will be canceled initially. That will be something that will take quite a while to get to that kind of activity. There will be daily reminders and expectations and procedures for hand washing. We're going to have signage in all the restrooms as well. We'll take advantage of our daily bulletins and our daily announcements to remind everyone about those expectations. Transportation will be consistent with all the health and safety requirements, physical distancing, mask-wearing, face coverings are required for anyone who enters our building, including our students. We do have cloth masks that will be provided to all students and staff. We do encourage you, we know that everyone's wearing masks now, so if you find something that's comfortable and works for you, you are more than welcome to utilize that, but we will also have them available for students and staff. We also have ordered, and some of it's already on-site, additional personal protective equipment for specific staff job functions that are considered high-risk, and those will be provided to our staff. Cleaning and disinfecting procedures. So Tony and his team did an amazing job, actually starting in February, in keeping our facilities clean and disinfected. We had, I think, one, maybe two of the Clorox 360 machines. At the beginning, we now have one for each of our buildings. We use hospital-grade cleaner and disinfectant, in fact, in our building today. And Batter's B and I were kind of remarking on the number of the Virex spray bottles that are available. We will clean daily. If we have cohorts in a space and we are transitioning from one cohort to another, then there will be cleaning that will occur between any cohort. That would be really a specific example, it would be lunch. If we did attempt to use a larger space for kids to have lunch, then that space would be cleaned before the next group came in. All of our high-touch areas, same thing you're probably doing at home, is wiping down doorknobs and railings and other things that get frequently touched, will be cleaned and disinfected throughout the day. And our restrooms are cleaned and disinfected at a minimum twice during the day, and then of course, every evening in preparation for the next day. So this has been a big question. What if someone develops signs of COVID-19? You know, how will we handle that when we are in, in person? So we do, we've already looked at each of our facilities, and our director of maintenance and facilities has worked with each principal on looking at their health office and how do we create an isolation space? If someone does have symptoms and they need to go home, whether it's a student or a staff member, we need to have them isolated. And so we've already figured out what those spaces are going to be and have them lined up. A symptomatic person, as an adult, will be advised to follow the public health guidance if you have symptoms, including contacting your healthcare provider. Of course, our, if we are in person, the parent of a student will be given that same advice. All staff members and student guardians will be asked to immediately inform the school district if someone has been in a district facility and has tested COVID-19 plus. Again, if someone is tested and don't tell us, it's difficult for us to track that down, but we are going to have lots of information out there to encourage people to let us know that, so that we can work with Department of Health to work through the contact tracing. A person who has tested positive or has COVID-19 symptoms will be permitted to return to the school or the district, consistent with the public health King County safety guidelines. And they have very specific guidelines that lay out how you can return safely to a space that includes other people. So the teaching and learning section of our, our plan starts with our continuum of learning. We've talked a lot about red, orange, yellow, and green learning, with red being where we're starting the school year in our remote learning. We know that we, and we'll show again the schedules tonight that have been developed at each level. Red doesn't mean that our buildings are completely closed and no one is in them. It means our buildings are being utilized with lots of social distancing during remote learning. We're going to encourage our teachers to work from their classrooms, teach from their classrooms, try to create that sense, at least visually, of normalcy for our students. You know, talk to public health about that again today, and they encourage that as well. You know, do whatever we can to create a sense of, of classroom for students. Orange is when we can start to bring in some larger groups of students, more than just a one-on-one appointment only, working with some small groups of students based on need and intervention. Yellow is when we have larger groups in and students are potentially staying for a full day, we're able to serve lunch, but still lots of things wouldn't be happening, extracurriculars, field trips, et cetera. Green is when we're still going to have precautions, but we're, we're having our, our classes in with full in-person instruction. That's our aspiration. So red, remote learning. Jamie, do you want to take this slide? Is she there?
You're muted, Jamie.
It looks like Jamie is in her car at the moment.
There we go. I just had to unmute and pull over at the same time, playing mom while on the call. So for red learning, it means that all students are going to be learning remotely. We might have certain students or small groups of students who need to enter the building at different times, and that will be determined by schools, programs, and there'll be communication with families in advance to that happening. Both synchronous and asynchronous instructional expectations and schedules across the levels are being produced. We've got the draft schedules linked again here tonight. And we might be in different phases in different schools, and so it might be that if somebody does test positive, or if a school does need to close for a period of time for deep cleaning, they might revert back to red if we have already transitioned to yellow, while other schools are able to remain open. So we're all starting in red, and as Superintendent Kloski mentioned, we are excited, because a number of our teachers are really wanting to get back into the classroom to provide that sense of normalcy for our students by teaching from the classroom. So that's something that we're, we're excited and working towards.
And we know that we always get the question of, you know, you use Education E's, can you explain things? So just to go back real quick, synchronous, asynchronous, Jamie, you want to take it?
Sure, sorry. So synchronous means live and in person. And so right now, the meeting that we are having is synchronous for those of us who are on it. It's being recorded so that it can be accessed asynchronously by people who are unable to make this particular time. So our teachers will have a blend of synchronous opportunities, where students are live with them in Zoom calls, and then there will also be opportunities with extensions for learning activities and practice that will be asynchronous, and they'll be able to access on their own time.
Thank you.
So what led us to open in the remote phase? There are a number of different pieces that, that came into play, and we looked at everything and kept hearing concerns shared by student staff and parents and in working coordination with the Health Department and Governor Inslee, who came out just yesterday and had another news conference. Same with Superintendent Reichdahl from OSPI, really encouraging, and it's, it's been a shift over the course of the last six weeks to the, districts in our area are likely opening in remote, and that is more supported now than it was in prior weeks.
And I think that we could safely say that every district in our ESD, the Puget Sound ESD, has pretty much announced that they will be in a fully remote setting for the start of the school year. So I know that we, at our last session, had a, had a lengthy description of each of the schedules, the first time we shared them in our community webinar, but we think it's important to go through them again, so people can really see them and access them. Just for those who are watching, either now or later, these are live links, so you can link on these schedules, and you will be able to see times and each day that's occurring. So we're going to start with our elementary schedule and ask our two elementary principals, who were the leaders for that learning forward work group, Amy Batline and Gillette and David Hoffman, to give us kind of a quick, quick overview of our elementary red learning schedule. And Andries, if you can pull that up so everyone can see it, that'd be great.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm David Hoffman. I'm principal at Island Park Elementary School. I'll try to make this quick. Just a quick overview about the benefits of this model. Again, we heard our community members, and we hope we've addressed their concerns. So first, it'll have daily robust synchronous learning opportunities. It's a good balance of online viewing and participation, as well as offline work. There'll be breaks and sizable lunch block and time for quick recesses at home. There'll be conferring opportunities for families and students. There will be asynchronous learning blocks. Emphasis on core content will be reading, math, writing, and social, emotional. We will be supporting our ELL, LAP, and IEP students throughout the day. We will have specialist involvement. The schedule is predictable, consistent. Students will see their teachers daily. Now I'll take it piece by piece, and we'll try to go through this quickly. So Andries, if you can scroll down from the beginning again. Our day, our teacher day, our staff day starts at 8:30 to 9:15. That'll be time where we will be available to have BGTs, that's Building Guidance Teams, to consider referrals to special ed. We will have time to sit as staffs and talk about student issues and intervention programs. Teachers will be available to also talk to parents. We will have our staff meetings, and our teachers will also participate in some of their other work that they do on a weekly or daily basis. The school day will start at 9:15, and we will have morning announcements and class meetings from 9:15 to 9:30, a time to first take attendance. That is when school starts, and we will be taking attendance, and it is a time to check in with the whole class and to do some of that social, emotional bonding, and just a really a good time to check in and welcome everyone and get started on a real positive note. Our first instructional block, our synchronous block, again, these are three blocks throughout the day, and they are mandatory. This is school, so we expect to see our students here. Our first block will be from 9:30 to 10:30. Each school would determine what the subject matter will be during these blocks. So from 9:30 to 10:30 might be your reading block, might be your math block, it might be your writing block. It is not three hours of strictly on-screen time, so I know there's been some concerns about that. Each block will usually be about a 15 to 20-minute mini lesson or a direct instruction piece, and then students will either have offline time to work on a project or an assignment to practice some of those skills they just learned. They may be involved in breakout rooms, they may be involved in one-to-one work with a teacher, a pair of other support staff. So that's three times throughout the day. You can see those are in yellow. And then we have a lunch break from 11:45 to 12:25, and we strongly encourage students to get outside and get fresh air and enjoy their lunch. Then from 12:25 to 12:45 is a unique time that we will be offering support to families, where we will answer any questions you might have about how to support your kids, or just if you have some questions about anything that's occurring in, in the lessons, and also time, again, to work with students, one-to-one or in small groups, if the teachers set that up with you. From 1:45 to 2 is a break, and then for the rest of the afternoon is that asynchronous time, where students will begin work assignments throughout the day. Those assignments will be shared through a different, what we're calling a grid light. It's nothing like you saw in the spring, but it's just available linkage to some of the materials that your child might need. There's also a time again where they can check in and work with paras and other support staff. This would be some time for our ELL students and other students who have some special needs that we may be working with them additionally during this time. And it's also the time that our specialists will be available and will be connecting with students, music and PE and our other specialists. And it's also our teacher planning time. So that in a nutshell is a quick run-through through the red model. And again, there's some great frequently asked questions linkage, if you go onto the district website about this model. And we will also be sending out, I believe tomorrow, the elementary team has sent out a video explaining this again, and some links to the frequently asked questions about this red model.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Yes.
Oops. There we go, Andries. There we go. Now to our middle school schedule, and I think, I'm not sure if Ms. Burgess or Mr. Miller is going to take this one, but I know they're both here. So for our Islander red learning schedule, you can see it also has daily student contact. Mary Jo, good to see you.
You too, Donna. Thank you so much for having us tonight. And I'm going to start, and Erin, of course, will fill in anything that I miss, I know for sure. And I just want to say how honored we are to have worked with such an amazing group of parents and staff in developing what this plan is for in developing what this plan is for learning for our students, and that our students are on our minds all the time, and that we want them to feel excited and engaged and encouraged and connected throughout their day at Islander, whether they are in brick and mortar or whether they are in an online model. So we really believe strongly that this model does meet their needs, and we are excited to present it to you. So we really think about our red learning model in three segments. We think about it in our synchronous instructional blocks, which happen consistently in the morning. And you can see there, the 8:45 to 12 is where your child will be in class with their teacher every day throughout the five days of the school week. And then we also think about it as the asynchronous learning time for kids in the afternoon. And we've had a lot of parents say, well, three hours of instruction isn't enough. And I heard David talk about this in the elementary piece. It really isn't about three hours of instruction. It's about an entire day of learning. And our teachers are spending a lot of time thinking and planning and creating opportunities for kids to learn beyond the synchronous instruction that carries into that afternoon time. And we think that it is going to be super valuable and equally important for our kids. And one of the things that we heard from our parents is consistency and communication. And so you're going to hear more about this in the weeks to come. But we have created a template, kind of like what David was saying, maybe about the learning grid's light, but a template that every one of our staff members will use that will outline the week for kids and families. And it'll be the same template per teacher, so families can count on that as a way to help their kids plan for their learning throughout. But we see that afternoon time is super valuable. And then the third cog in the wheel that we are calling our red learning day is really that teacher office hour time. And that got really confused in the spring, because we called our instructional blocks office hours. And so we have created a video that will come out on Monday that will really, you'll have an opportunity to hear teachers talking about these three different pieces and how they are planning to meet the needs, the learning needs of our kids. But those office hours are times for kids to check in, both after the synchronous learning, and then again, after the asynchronous learning, for additional help and additional support. It is time for teachers to call kids back in, you know, one-on-one or in small groups, to support them based on things that they were seeing in the synchronous learning and/or in the work that kids are submitting asynchronously. It is also, there is support for kids, like David was saying, in elementary, all day. So in the afternoons as well, in between the office hours, while kids are having some agency to think about what it is that they are working on, either post-instructional block time or in preparation for what they're going to do the next day. There will be paraprofessionals available to support them throughout that whole time, who know what's going on in each of the content areas and can be an asset and a support for them throughout that time. So those are kind of the three segments that we think about for the learning time for our kids. And then, of course, there are all the details. There's the, you know, what's going on in those 30 minutes before school starts, which is just like the elementary, in that it is our teachers having an opportunity to really think about the needs of our kids. It is an opportunity to have those BGT meetings. It is an opportunity to connect with parents and support families as needed. We have that 45-minute lunch break, and just like what David was saying, we want built-in recess. We want our kids to eat and move and get out of their seat and away from the computer. And one of the things that we were encouraging our teachers to do is in the asynchronous learning plans, to plan learning that takes kids away from the computer so that in the afternoon, they are not all full back online the whole time. So really trying to think about the needs of our kids in a variety of ways. And then, of course, that afternoon time also provides opportunities for our teachers to plan the instruction and plan to meet the needs of our kids. So Erin, things I've missed.
Thank you. The only thing I want to add, and it's something that you'll see in all three schedules, elementary, middle, and high school, and that differs from some other district schedules, is we heard the value that we heard from our community, our teachers and our kids, teachers interacting with kids every single day. And you'll see that common thread throughout all three schedules, where I think in our school, it's on Monday. I think it's in the high school on Monday as well. It looks a little bit different in the fact that you see all your kids for shorter periods of time, but there are no off days. There are no days that teachers and kids aren't interacting together on the curriculum. And we found that really valuable, and that was something in the community that we heard too. So it's a feature of our schedule that you might not see in schedules of other districts, but we really think that is a benefit. So that's all I had to add.
All right. Thank you. And now for our high school schedule. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Donna. As that's coming up and hopefully being enlarged a little bit. There we go. Perfect, Andries. Appreciate it. I want to reiterate a few things. Erin just said that all of these schedules do require daily live virtual contact with teachers and students. We wanted to uphold that as well. And in fact, again, we have three priorities. It's going to make sure that we keep the safety of our stakeholders first and foremost. Secondly, that we really are working on quality virtual instruction and quality pedagogy with that, so that the academic pieces sound. And last, but certainly not least, that we're caring for the social and emotional needs of our students going forward through this environment. So on Monday morning, you'll see targeted student time, Monday morning and Tuesday, Thursday. Each of those times are for students that particularly are having struggles. It may be with a particular concept. It may be in general, they're needing extra help and support. So teachers have that time, and we'll be outreaching to students who need specific assistance in specific ways. Then as students touch off their day on Monday, they're going to go through a brief introduction of every class. That's 8:30 to 11:45. And during that time, teachers can frame the week, make sure that they have some initial instruction, and get kids working as they're going forward. Next, that afternoon, teachers have collaborative planning time for them to prepare for lessons that they will be posting each Friday for the following week, if not working further ahead with that. Then on the rotation days, Tuesday, Thursday is one rotation, Wednesday, Friday is another. Those days, combined with Monday, account for 15 and a half hours of direct live virtual instruction. I also want to clarify, I think it came up in the elementary notion as well. This is not all direct teach. This is not where a student would sit in front of a screen and just watch the teacher present information. But it will be some of that. It also will be some guided instruction and guided practice. And last but not least, it will also include student activities in which students hopefully will be interacting and working with the teacher and one another virtually. You'll also notice that there is a little, there's an extended time for transitions because of technology needs, because students need to get up and stretch. We all need to go to the bathroom on occasion. And also, we want students to take that time to decompress, be ready for the next period, and focus. The number of times kids take transitions in the day is difficult at best. It's more difficult now. And teachers have to prepare for that next course as well. You'll also notice that there are an hour and 15 minutes on each day, built in for its office hour. So it's asynchronous instruction. It is tutoring. It can be group. It can be individual. That's flexible time when a student can be working on their work. Teacher's available for them right then and there and can reply on whatever needs that the student has. Again, one of the specific things you'll notice that is a priority for us, on Wednesday and Friday, we will have Islander Hour. For those who've been with the school for a while, that is our advisory program, which a group of students stay together for four years and work on the unwritten curriculum, social issues, bonding, and connecting with an adult that stays with them and that they can trust. We'll be focusing specifically on making sure that executive functioning organizational skills are being taught and supported. Number two, that there's a group of students that they can bond and connect with as much as possible in this environment, and that there's a trusted adult that can help them, whether it's an academic need or whether they need something more just emotionally. They're struggling. They have somebody they see with that more flexible agenda item each week. Also, we've heard from our community the need for us to have a consistent posting of student assignments. We've worked with students on this. So every Friday, teachers will be posting work for the next week in detail. Broader scoping sequence will be published earlier, and we'll go through, of course, the semester. But those week-by-week lessons, time requirements, will be posted at the very last, or latest, by the end of each Friday. We hope that that does support the needs of students. We recognize that this is not perfect. It is not ideal. I hope you understand that we have put forth our best effort to put a model that balances the many factors that teachers and students have in making the most of those instructional moments and those relationships. If either one of my other colleagues who I know is on here wants to make a comment, or if I missed something, Jeff or Nick, I know Lisa cannot be here this evening. If you want to add something, please do. If not, I will turn it back over to Donna.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Welcome.
So going back to our slide deck, one of the components on the OSPI template, and one of the things we've had questions about from families, and frankly, stock as well, is what will attendance look like? We were in a very different emergency mode. It was in crisis mode when we went to remote in the spring. And attendance wasn't, was much more flexible. It is going to be much more consistent with what we're all familiar with. So as you can see on this slide, for elementary students, it will be daily, and it will be in each instructional block that teachers will be doing that check-in. And for our middle school and high school, it'll be by the periods which we're on the schedule. We will continue to closely monitor attendance, just like we do when we are in person in our buildings, and following up and touching base with students and their families if there is some attendance issues that are occurring. Jamie, do you want to take the grading policy?
Sure. One other highlight, can I go back to attendance for just a second and just highlight that we do have a district attendance coordinator? And she, last spring, started the job in a remote setting. She hadn't had an opportunity to meet any of the students in person. But she did establish a positive reward system for students to encourage attendance. And we opted to continue that, and that will, you'll see that continuing through the start of this next school year, really trying to acknowledge great attendance. So I just think that's a positive that we're going to keep rolling with. Grades and student progress.
I'm going to jump in just for a second, back to attendance. We know that when we get to in-person learning, it's going to have to pivot a little bit, because we are going to have to change our mindset for in-person learning, that everyone who has illness, signs and symptoms of COVID, which are many, we're going to have to encourage them to not come into our building. So really, the attendance we're talking about here is really focused on our red learning. We want to keep our students really engaged in our red learning and make sure that they understand that attendance isn't optional. It is something that we do expect of them. Thank you, Jamie.
So grading and student progress. As Superintendent Koloski has mentioned a couple of times already, we were in triage emergency mode in the spring. And the grading system was determined by the state, and we worked to implement it within the banks of that river. And we are able to return to our previous policies regarding grading and student progress. So starting in the fall, elementary will continue with the standards-based grading. There will be an emphasis on some of the core content areas of literacy and math. And middle school and high school will return to their letter grading system. I know that there was some pilots at the middle school last year with standards-based grading, so I'm thinking that that will continue for those teachers who did implement that last year. But the rest of the teachers will remain with the letter grades, and the high school is returning to the letter grading system. There is the option for students to elect to choose a pass/fail, and they can work with counselors to determine whether or not that's a good option for them.
Great. So orange learning. Jamie, you take this one, and I'll take the next one, because it's brand new from yesterday.
Okay. So in orange learning, we originally were thinking about this as a hybrid model. And I think, as we explained in the last meeting, really that got to a point where students were going to be receiving less instructional time. And so in an effort to really value the educational and academic components, the red online learning is preferable to a hybrid model. However, we might be bringing students in for part of a day or part of a week, based on their needs and supports. And so we will be working, as I said earlier, with parents and counselors and support staff to determine what services a student might need, and why they may need to come in for a part of a day or for a period, or to receive a special service. It might very well be that we have some students, either individually or in groups, who are moving into a yellow phase while others are remaining in red. And we might have some students who are even in orange and have some at each of those different continuums along the way.
Great. Thank you, Jamie. So how will we make our decisions? And I know that some people said, oh, three weeks, that's too often to pivot. And the concept of the three weeks is really our decision-making matrix. It isn't necessarily that every three weeks, we're going to say, now, we're pivoting. We want to look at various factors as we're progressing through our continuum. So in Week 1, and when we start school, everyone will be engaged in, as an example, so starting September 2nd, in red learning. We'll be looking at our data points and working very closely with King County Public Health, as well as the new information that has come from the Department of Health. We also have to look at staff availability as we start to transition to orange and student learning. So to Jamie's point, we'll be looking for our students that are perhaps needing interventions, other supports and services. We'll be looking at student attendance, all of those pieces in Week 2. In Week 3, we continue in that selected modality for the majority of groups that are in them, and continue to look at our data, make contact with public health to make sure we're on target with them. And then, as we move forward into that, we're just going to make an announcement to say we're going to continue where we are. Here's what the numbers are. If individuals or groups are going to be transitioning in or out, we will be giving them that information as well, if we need to dial back, which could happen if we've started some small groups or one-on-ones coming in, and the numbers don't go well, we could very likely have to pull back to everyone remote. But we also will start to prepare for now the numbers are where we can start to bring in more groups of students and start to timeline out what that would look like over the next few weeks. We would also really look to, if we were going to make a massive big change and say, we're ready for this now, we'd really look at a clear break in time. So we have lots of preparation, certainly for staff, but also for our families to say, all right, at this point in time in the future is when we're going to be pivoting a school or groups of students to a new color of learning. This slide is the one I referenced. That is the newest slide. Yesterday, in a press release, Governor Inslee introduced guidance recommendations for reopening schools in what are identified as high, moderate, and low-risk counties. When we post this slide deck, that high, moderate, and low-risk counties will link you right to the Department of Health website, where you can look at where all the different counties are. We are in what is called high risk right now here in King County. That means we have more than 75 new cases per 100,000 residents over a two-week period. When you are in, when a county is in this high-risk zone, so to speak, the governor recommends distance learning and canceling postponing all in-person extracurricular activities. In speaking with public health today, I talked to them about, certainly, our staff coming in to be in their classrooms to deliver the remote learning. They were absolutely in favor of that, particularly in light of the attestations and the other precautions we'll have in place. Talked about appointments that could occur in still-in-red learning, as well as in orange with students, particularly one-on-one appointments, as might be needed for assessment or check-ins with kids. Absolutely felt supportive of that as well. Again, with all of the protocols in place, as it says at the bottom. Moderate risk would be when there's 25 new cases per 100,000 residents over a two-week period. This is when the governor recommends to have distance learning for our secondary students, our middle and high school, and in-person for elementary school students. Again, that's going to be as feasible as possible, because you still have to maintain that physical distancing, which is that six-foot perimeter. Again, in this phase, he also recommends, as we were doing when we went into the crisis of postponing those before-and-after-school extracurricular activities. Anything that has to do with large group, trying to create as few interactions as possible. Anything that has to do with large group, trying to create as few interactions as possible. Low risk is that, I think that's an incorrect number, I apologize. We just put this up here yesterday, it says 25 new cases per 100,000. I believe it's not the same as, as the moderate. We'll have to get that corrected. For low risk, the governor recommends that hybrid and distance learning model for middle and high school. So being able to bring in larger groups of students for different activities. Some schools are considering in a hybrid where students spend two days in remote learning, or I'm sorry, two days in in-seat learning. And then they go home and they have three days of no teacher contact and they're doing some asynchronous and lots of on their own. We heard loud and clear from our families that they wanted daily contact. And so as we tried to evolve how a hybrid model would work, we felt that it was actually less instruction time for our students. So our orange learning is, is really targeted and focused, personalizing it for our students. Definitely individual, but in groups as well. How do we start to bring in groups of students so they can have some interaction, some interventions and social emotional?
Donna, just to add in, I'm checking the chart now and the moderate risk is 25 to 75 cases per 100,000 over the last, on average for the last 14 days. So it's the moderate risk that needs to be adjusted.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You said more than 25, the other one's fewer than 25, but it's nice to have that range. Thank you. So yellow learning is somewhat similar to what we were before we closed our schools. There's, if we had relaxed health and safety precautions. And the big piece here is that elimination of the six-foot distancing because that is what really makes it difficult for us to bring in all of our students at the same time. So to say that we'd have all our nearly all students and staff returned for in-person becomes really problematic with that six-foot perimeter, particularly when you talk about things like lunch and passing periods at the high school. So yellow will be something that we might have some of our students in, as we've discussed with the board previously, our youngest learners. We hope to be able to transition our kindergarten and our first grade students into yellow learning as soon as the, the model allows us to because they will, they are going to be set up in those smaller classes that allows for the six-foot distancing within their classroom. We can cohort them for their lunchtime and their recess times. So yellow is something that is, is again aspirational, but we'll still have a lot of limitations on it. Those who want to come into our buildings will still need an attestation as do students when they come in. Before and after-school activities would be limited and off-campus field trips and travel would only be considered on a case-by-case basis. Green is again that aspirational piece, all staff and students in teaching and learning. And again, that six-foot would need to be eased somewhat for us to be able to bring everyone in. We did put a note on here that the option of my online for families who are really determined that they would rather stay out of buildings. We've heard from the very beginning, there were families who strongly felt that until there was a vaccine, they really wanted their child to not be in the in-person setting. And we'll talk about my, my online in a little bit here. Community members and parents may enter schools, but could be limited based on the conditions. Before and after-school activities may resume, but it would depend again on, on size of the activities. We might be having to limit certain things. Off-campus field trips and travel again would be considered on a case-by-case basis. Jamie, my online, this, this is your, your project and thank you for taking this on. I know it's been a big lift.
So my online, to clarify, is not red learning. So red remote learning is where students are assigned, so I'll use elementary for an example. They're assigned to teacher, they're assigned to teacher A. And with teacher A, they will engage in synchronous remote learning. So via Zoom, they will have activities provided by the teacher. They may also view videos or things created by others as part of their asynchronous learning time. But they will remain as a cohort of students with the same teacher for their learning during the course of the day and for as long as we're in red learning. When we are able to transition to yellow, then the students will remain with that teacher and begin to re-enter the school building together with that same teacher. My online is operating in a fully online environment and the, the students will receive instruction via, what I, the best way I could describe it is modules. So there might be video clips of instruction from a variety of different people providing that instruction. There will also be opportunities for them to engage with learning, with practice. They'll get feedback on it, but they won't necessarily be receiving that instruction in a live setting to be able to raise a hand and say, I don't understand that particular question or repeat that. They'll be able to rewind, they'll be able to view the video again, but it, they're not going to be communicating one-on-one full-time with the teacher like they would be in the red learning environment. My online students will have contact with MISD staff members. We just sent a survey out to elementary parents today to inquire about whether or not they would prefer my online, if they would prefer red learning for the duration of the school year or if they want to go with the red learning until we're able to transition into yellow in-person learning. And we're using that because of variety, a number of parents gave feedback to say, oh, I really want red learning the entire year or I really want my online all year. When are you going to make a decision as to whether or not it's a district staff member or we're going to be contracting with other providers to provide that online learning? So we're trying to gather that information to make the best informed decisions as we can. And so once we have that information, we'll be able to report back next week as far as numbers and what that's looking like for what we're able to provide. My online students will learn largely asynchronously throughout the week. But as I mentioned before, they will have the opportunity to touch base, get clarification and meet with a district staff member who will help coordinate with their counselors, school building, et cetera.
Great. Thank you. So let's move on to some of our system supports. And I think first up will be special services. Dr. Booby, would you please take this section?
Yes, thank you, Donna. So I know there's a lot of families. We serve about 500 students with disabilities through special services. And I know everyone's very anxious. So all students are Gen Ed students first. And so we have our elementary, middle and high school teams have done a great job building out the schedules for red learning so that we can now take a look at what our students need with disabilities to access their Gen Ed support curriculum. And so we will be providing SDI supplementary agency services, related services, PHOTPT, all that through a continuum, through this continuum. We are excited to announce that we have started in-person evaluation testing this week. So we do have staff using the health and safety protocols as well as students coming in to finish some evaluations that weren't able to be finished with, we had the emergency closure. We will be providing in-person services as appropriate. We'll be prioritizing our youngest learners and those with significant needs. Now the question becomes, who are those students? What does that look like? And I know there's a lot of parents who, who want to know today what that schedule looks like. There'll be appointment-based services based on an individualized student need. So this will look different for any, for each student. So there's no one answer that I can give every parent. But we, our case managers, just like we did in the spring, we contacted every family. All 500 families got a personal phone call. It is our intention to reach out and to work collaboratively with the families so that we can design with the family a system of support to start those in-person services as appropriate. Some of the considerations we're looking at are students' limited ability to tolerate the PPE. So a student who with a significant disability may not be able to wear a mask for six hours straight. So we want to see what services need to be in person, what the student's tolerance is for a mask or safety and what safety protocols need to be in place specifically for students with significant needs. Let's see here. So we'll start with appointment services and then as the superintendent makes the decision of when we can, based on the health protocols, move towards a more orange model, then we will start grouping students and bringing them back together in small groups. And I'm kind of envisioning moving from one-on-one appointment services to maybe three students, a parent and a teacher, kind of a cohort model of moving through. I know a lot of you would like that answer today, but as we start with appointment services, get assessments done, start collecting our data, working with the families individually about what those services look like, then we'll start to build out that next section. We are going to host a parent webinar on August 19th for general sped questions so that you can have access to more specific questions and answers on the 19th. And then Beth and I, and we'll also be holding a additional webinar specifically for preschool, ATP and so forth so that parents in those specific programs can get more detailed information about what those schedules can look like.
Great. Thank you. Let's talk about lunch. Lunch will not look like it looked in the spring as of yet. I did see a report that there are some of our federal legislators who are pushing forward with a bill for the USDA to continue to provide the waiver, so to speak, for the feeding program that we were able to provide in the spring. That hasn't been passed yet. We're, I know our food service director Carol Bass and I, we, we speak frequently and she is watching for that carefully. There have been a few waivers that have come through, ones that allow for parents in a remote setting for learning to pick up the lunches. But we will continue to have lunch whether we're in remote or in-person learning. In the in-person learning, it will be a grab-and-go style or staff will be plating the foods and you can see all of these recommendations come directly from Department of Health. In elementary, the students will be in cohorts and they'll be physically distanced during lunch. There'll be cleaning that will occur. And again, at the beginning of the year, if we're able to get students in and the weather cooperates, we can also have lunch outside as well. Middle school and high school, when we get to any in-person lunch service will be available and we will use all the physical distance precautions that are needed considering for lines and seating, et cetera. So lunch will be available particularly for those who qualify and also for, for a fee at this point. As we get more information, if that changes, we will get that out to our, our families as soon as we have the information. All right, technology. Andries or Jamie?
I'm going to take this slide and I believe Jamie has the professional development slide. So we have updated information on our, our website, on our Fall 2020 website under schools and department planning. There's information in regards to when families can pick up iPads from the schools. We have several dates, starting August 18th. For our elementary schools, we'll do a drive-through pickup opportunity the week of the, the 17th and then the week of the 25th. There'll be two opportunities there at all four of the elementaries. And then at our middle school back-to-school day, we're going to be asking sixth graders, that all, all incoming sixth graders and then new families in seventh and eighth grade, we'll be providing information for what that back-to-school day will look like. And there'll be opportunities to pick up your iPad there on that day. And then our high school fees and photos on August 25th and 26th. We also have information on there around MISD hotspots. We're pleased to announce that we'll continue to be able to provide hotspots for families that don't have high-speed internet access at their home. We have recently sent out surveys to staff and families that requested hotspots in the spring to determine if they need, continuing those hotspots for the fall. And then we also have information on our website for families who are concerned about accessing online Zoom meetings, especially if they have multiple children in the house. We've put some instructions on the website on how you can go through and check your internet speeds and potentially increase your bandwidth or your wireless coverage throughout your home before school starts, before you request a hotspot. We would like to reserve those hotspots for families that truly do not have high-speed internet access in their home. And so I am encouraging families to take a look at that page and take a look at some of our suggestions on, on how you can go through and, and either increase speeds or increase coverage. Several of the internet service providers, if you haven't checked on recent plans, often will offer current plans and promotions that can increase your speed for at or near the cost that you're currently paying. So we are highly encouraging families to take a look at those options as well. But we will have hotspots available for families that truly still feel like they don't have adequate internet at home. Similarly, if, for any reason, if your iPad was damaged over the summer, there's information on how to reach out to us so that we can get your iPad replaced before the start of the school. So you have it working and ready for September 2nd. And then we also understand that there have been some families who have un-enrolled for, for various reasons and other options. And we do have some information on there, on our website on how you can return that technology back to the district so we can allocate it to, to other families. In addition to the technology, we've also been working with our teachers, our community, our administrators in our learning forward teams around the learning management platforms. We heard loud and clear in the spring about the need for consistency on how our learning management solutions are used throughout our, our buildings. And so we've been working in those teams. What we're planning on, on rolling out in the fall is our kindergarten and first grade classrooms will use CSO and have a set of common expectations on parent communications and posting assignments. Our second grade teachers, we are giving them the option to use either CSO or Google Classroom, but we are requiring that if whatever is decided, they have to make that decision as a building grade level to provide that consistency as families develop cohorts or try and work together to make sure that students have a firm understanding of their expectations. We want to make sure that we provide that consistency. And then in grades three through five, we'll be rolling out Google Classroom and having teachers use Google Classroom. And then in grades six through 12, it will be Schoology. Jamie will talk a little bit more about this in the next slide, but we've been working very hard with our, our learning forward teams to talk about those common expectations and best practices to help make sure that with these learning management solutions, we have consistency and clear organization and communication for our students and our families throughout the fall and, and the school year.
Great. Andries, Jamie, you're up again.
So professional development and learning, as Andries talked about, we are establishing and, and the learning forward teams have established common expectations and guidelines to provide consistency. And another educational term that we often use is a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And essentially what we have done is create a guaranteed and viable curriculum for teachers in the training that we're going to provide so that we are consistent across the board in all Schoology and all Zoom expectations. Hopefully that addresses some student and parent concerns about some of the inequities that were, arose during the spring. But we'll also then be able to provide support and training for parents to allow you to understand what you can expect, how to navigate different sites because things should be very predictable and consistent across the board. Additionally, staff are learning ways in which to build community with their classes in a remote environment. That's something that's, we heard from staff over and over. They really want to make sure that they can establish those amazing relationships that they have with kids, even though we're in a remote environment. So we've got staff engaging in a number of different professional learning opportunities voluntarily of their, on their own time. Right now, we, we have almost 200 staff members enrolled in a variety of different courses being offered. Like I said, we've got those common expectations and we are opening and extending our training opportunities to include our classified staff during the month of August. And we are extending the amount of time that we allow for, for staff to engage in the professional learning so that they can not only engage in it, but then apply it as they prepare for the school year. So we're excited to be offering a combination of synchronous and asynchronous offerings for them and including all staff so that we are all able to support all kids.
And last slide, Nova, who has waited so patiently, is going to talk to us all about assessment, which is one of the components in the template as well from OSPI. Nova?
Yes. So we've been meeting as a learning forward team for assessment, sometimes jointly, and then sometimes as subgroups for elementary and secondary. Largely toward the end, we broke off because those are very different things, which you can see here. So for elementary, we are modifying our current universal screening tools to take some off and then prioritize what should happen first. We are having conversations about which students are prioritized first as well so that we can make sure that services provided to those kids start as quickly as possible. So for instance, our students who are in LAP and Tidal classrooms, those students will likely be assessed first, as will our ELL students and our special ed students, so that they can then start those services. Those teachers have the data that they need to proceed. We've extended the normal window. Typically, we have about four to five weeks of a window at the start of the school year to provide those assessments. However, it's a lot easier in person to schedule those assessments than it is when you are in a virtual environment. So we've extended that window to be the first couple months of schools. Again, we're prioritizing those students who are going to receive services and then based on previous scores as well. So even if they weren't receiving scores previous to the closure, or excuse, services previous to the closure, then they will still be prioritizing the students who had been flagged or on a watch list of sorts, which is what we refer to it for title. Secondary is very different in that it does not already have a universal screening tool for our secondary classrooms. So we have settled on utilizing the existing structures that exist from the state, so that's the interim assessment blocks through smarter balance. There are some science tools as well. It'll be unlikely, I would speculate, that our science teachers would choose those, but those are available as well. And then team-generated assessments was the more likely tool that most teams will select. So they are going to utilize an assessment that they agree upon together to assess students at the start of the year to determine next steps instructionally. They will need less time to do that by nature of the fact that the kids are secondary students. So that window is a shorter window of the first month of school, and they all felt that that was reasonable to expect students to do that. Our next steps as a team are discussing training for staff, so that's the thing that's been asked for, is how do we administer these assessments in a virtual environment? We actually did some of that training in the spring with our staff. They expressed an interest in attempting virtual assessments, which was great. I think we were one of the very few districts who did that at all. And so we did get some assessment data from our kids in the spring. And we're tapping into the teachers in our assessment learning forward team, as well as those who had done a lot of the assessing in the spring, to record some videos of what each of the types of assessments looks like at the elementary level. And then we'll talk a little bit more about security and things of that nature for our secondary kids.
Thank you, Nova. So our teachers will be creating videos so that our teachers can learn asynchronously from the videos that have been created. Perfect. So that is the last of the slides. We're going to be posting this on this website so that people can have access to it and see all the links. And I am now going to throw it back to President Lurie, and I'm sorry, we probably didn't give enough time for questions, but hopefully we can get as many answered, and if we have to run over, so be it.
Yes. I just want to remind our community that please address individual questions to the appropriate person. If you don't know who that is, feel free to send the email, well, to the board or to Superintendent Kloski, and she will make sure that it gets to the right person. But the board will not be addressing individual concerns at our meeting next week. It's just not possible and not appropriate. So it is 6:14. I'm looking all over my screen for my board directors, and I want to just kind of start going through. So let me know if you have a question, and again, as concise as possible so we can use our time with the information. And Maggie Tyne?
Just as far as where to email if you have a specific question, I just saw something in one of the district emails that came out that gave a different address to send questions to. It was like communications@Mercer Island School District or something. Jamie's nodding her head. What is that address, if that would be more productive for people to send to?
That one goes to our communications coordinator when we send out a communication. That's the one that collects any responses back from that communication. However, for the linkage, we've been pretty clear on sending it to the board@merceralislandschools.org email and put in that subject line linkage.
Yeah, linkage, August 11th. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Okay, thank you. And then my other, I wanted to say, okay, no, I'm not. I'm sticking to questions. Thank you for the reminder, Director Lurie. I wanted to ask, just to clarify, with Jamie, it sounds like you guys have sent out this questionnaire to the elementary school parents to ask about who's interested in like a red learning all-year model versus, you know, MI online versus red learning shifting through the colors as that becomes possible. And it sounds like there will be, you'll collect that data, and then next week, you'll be able to have some more firmed-up plans. But is that, are you saying that that is something that the district will be considering, the option of red learning all year?
I think we want it on the table because that was something that we got back in after the community forum. There were a number of parents saying, you know, if the numbers are there, can we do this? And so we don't want to keep trying to make decisions or guesses. We really want to know what the numbers are, and then we can make the best decisions. The survey's going to close on the 12th, so unfortunately, I don't think I will have it in time for the linkage meeting, but we will have it in time for the 13th, just to be able to share what the numbers are and what that's looking like.
And that really aligns with our staffing, right? Because that means staffing around, because in the red mode, it really is a kindergarten teacher, our first grade teacher, assigned to that cohort of students. And so we have to be able to have enough students to have that teacher stay with those students for the year.
Thank you.
Looking, oh, David, did you have, I see you're off mute.
Sure. I'll, just for public record, I'll send a bunch of feedback to Donna directly, but in a bunch of areas. But with respect to questions, I think really the hybrid learning opportunity, while teachers are teaching in classroom, they'll be having the cameras on them and giving us the red learning environment. I'm super interested that that be made available to students who may be quarantined or for whatever other reason need to work at home, that they can have the hybrid learning opportunity as well. So I do think that that is a viable possibility for our community. If I look at the low-risk definition, it's 25 per 100,000 in a two-week period. For the Mercer Island community, if you separate us from King County, that would be about six for the 25, six cases of COVID in a two-week period for the 25K population. We could actually hit that as testing ramps up and that type of thing. So from a community spread and a community, you know, low rates of COVID within this community, that's actually very possible as testing ramps up. And you could see that in a January timeframe, online learning become, sorry, in-person learning becomes very viable, and hybrid learning might be a very interesting opportunity since we're so close to that. So that's, you know, off the about two dozen questions I've got on my paper. That's the one that really raises to the top to see if teachers can have a camera in the room that allows students to participate remotely. I think that pays off in terms of the mental health for the students, in terms of coordinating and connecting with other students in the classroom. It's very synchronous, it's very engaged, and it allows them to go to the next year being very, very comfortable that they know the teachers, they know the students, they know the regimen that's going to happen in school. I just can't say enough, in terms of the pandemic, connectivity is super important for our kids, and I would just love to see that. I mean, I've got two dozen questions, and by far, that raises to the top. A bunch of the other ones are just terminology issues and that type of thing. So thank you very much. No, actually, no need to answer now. I just highlight the importance about thinking the hybrid learning opportunity through and available to kids who need it.
I have a question. Go up with that, David. So David, I have a similar question, and I concur with exactly what you've been saying because I see that what we're presenting, it doesn't appear that we actually have a hybrid model. It seems like the majority of our students is either going to be all online or the aspirational yellow model. And so, you know, when we're asking questions, you know, what are the challenges that is keeping us from doing a hybrid model? And then it kind of ties to what you're saying, David, is that as we're identifying these baseline criterias of transitioning from one to the next, we're getting a little bit more better guidelines from the state, but it talks about community transmission. And so I want to clarify, when we talk about community, are we talking about Mercer Island community, or are we talking about King County? And so those are things that we need to be really clear on. But regardless, it would be important to explore what are the challenges to doing the hybrid model because it seems like we're going to stay in the red model forever if, yeah, if we're not serious about the hybrid option.
I can answer part of that real quickly. It is about high, moderate, and low-risk counties, so we are inclusive with King County. Is internet freezing? No, yes. Brian?
My quick question is, so a student in the in-person model tests positive, and so they have to step out. What will happen for them in that interim? Will they, how will they make up their homework? How will they track with their class? Or will it be treated simply as sick days?
So we do know we're going to have to be flexible, particularly in person with our attendants because of this really change in mindset of if you have any of the symptoms, which are a long list, we've all seen them, you are encouraged to not come and have interactions with others. So working through the logistics of if someone is quarantined, a student is quarantined, how do we serve their needs? We do some of that when we are in person, when a student has to have an extended absence, we work individually with the teacher to support that student during that absence. So it would be similar. If we had online availability at the time, then we would be able to transition that student into that. So all of the pieces of that aren't completely worked out, but particularly in elementary where a teacher is assigned, if a student goes out for a long-term illness, whether in person, we do work with that student and that family to support their learning during that absence.
And what about, just related to that, is what about for teachers who need to go out ill?
So we will have to work through how we will substitute. It's going to be a bit of a challenge in red learning. We don't deny that because there's a lot of training for our teachers to have, and will we have, will we have the opportunity to train all of our subs? Most likely not, but we also are developing a plan to use our teachers who are not assigned to a regular classroom all the time. They will be familiar with all of the systems, and so they will then also be able to serve as substitutes. So if we're in red learning and classes scheduled, class will occur.
Maggie Tyne, go ahead. You just went on mute. Was that your question?
No, I went the wrong way. I just wanted to clarify, when you say if there's online availability in the case of a student who's having to quarantine at home during, once kids are going back into school physically, do you mean like if there was, say, like a red all-year class for that, they would be able to maybe be moved to that class for the two weeks that they were at home, like by grade level or whatever? Not that they would move into MI online, since it wouldn't necessarily match up with the classes that they were taking.
No, and depending how long that student would be out, depending on the severity, there are a number of other options we have available to us, like home hospital. So if a student's out for an extended period of time, it operates much like MI online, but it serves as a conduit between what's happening in the school and the assigned classroom and what the student's able to perform or complete at home.
Will cameras be required for students to have them on during class? I don't know who wants to answer that.
I'm happy to go for it. We're talking about expectations with staff and being consistent, and that's one of the things right now the learning forward teams are working on. And we've come up with some cool graphics and things to be able to share with students. We want to make sure to honor the fact that some students may not want us to see their backgrounds. And so I know Andries is working on some standard backgrounds that students can use that would just have the logo or a picture of the school building so that they are able to do that. And I know each of the different learning forward team levels is working on their expectations for students, and I expect that they will be consistent.
I would just add that we are encouraging students to have their camera on, to have that engagement, but we also acknowledge that some students may not feel comfortable doing so.
We do also have a way to track that when students aren't engaging, and we'll be doing follow-up communication with those students, probably in a different modality, you know, maybe the old-fashioned phone call way to, you know, check in on them and do those checks as to how are things going for them.
Thank you. Brian?
While we're talking about technology for just a moment, this came up in our COVID networking call today with WASTA. So apparently CARES funds have now been released by the state. And Andries, you'll hopefully know more about this than I do, but I understand that a program is being set up for families or students who access free and reduced lunch will have access to get free and have a cable running to their home, will have free service for a year of internet, high-speed internet provided to them by the state. So that's pretty fresh news coming out, but I think that's pretty exciting. So if we can get that information to our families, that is a really great resource.
Yeah, I think that's a great resource to add to our tech resources page on our Fall 2020 page.
All right, Tam, did I see your hand?
Before I go to my question, actually, I want to touch back with Maggie Tyne's question about when someone is sick. And then Jamie, you're saying that then we can put them potentially on the, another classroom that's fully online. So then it's when we talk, when we're thinking about that, it seems like then across the district, we need to have all of our elementary schools on the same curriculum and kind of teaching at the same pace so that there will be an easier transition when they're in class or at home. And I would say that probably next year, there will be more than normal of those who might have to be out for two weeks at a time or multiple times like that. But I guess my question is, so I haven't seen any changes in guidance from OSPI regarding instructional hours. And so I'm assuming that school districts are still accountable to the current Washington State Board of Education requirement of, I think it's 1,080 for high school and 1,000 hours for K to eighth grade. And then, so then I guess, you know, and those hours are, seems to be pretty defined, really clearly defined as being hours that students are provided the opportunity to engage in educational activities planned by and under the direction of school district staff. So in our current curriculum plan, how is the district calculating educational activities planned by and under the direction of school district staff? For example, can we count office hours as instructional hours when they are not and cannot support all students? Then also in the afternoons, you know, are the asynchronous work time in elementary and the student work time in middle school and the meeting collaboration in high school seen as work, seen as homework time, seen as asynchronous self-learning time, or seen as split classroom? Because how we see this have huge implication on whether we can count them as teacher-guided instructional hours. So as you're doing your plan, how are you planning to report this back to OSPI to meet those current instructional hour requirement?
The requirement's 180 days. We will start on September 2nd. We will have our days as they are laid out in our student calendar, which is that 180 days, so we will be meeting that requirement. If there is a closure that has to happen district, district-wide and we're not able to have our red learning days, which doesn't seem that that would be a possibility, then we would have to have a waiver like we did last year. But we fully anticipate that if we have to close a school or a section of a school that we can pivot to red learning, which will meet the requirements for the hundred and eighty days or the one thousand twenty-seven average minutes instructionally. And Ty is nodding because as our CFO, that is his responsibility to make sure that we are meeting those requirements.
So, but then if you're looking at, just, you know, and then I think part of it is to better clarify for, for the community. Because if you're just looking at the plan that we are proposing and you're counting, you know, what people determine as teacher-guided hours, right?
That's not how the one thousand twenty-seven works. It's inclusive of the student day and it has the realization that when our students are in brick and mortar, that every minute isn't spent in front of a teacher. It's as it was described by our principals earlier on, that that availability of the teacher is there. The teacher's giving assignments, kids are spending time working on the assignments, they're coming back to the teacher. All of those office hours times when teachers are available and are working with students and reaching out to students, that is all part of the minutes as they're calculated.
Okay, so the office hours are all for every single student. So, just want to be clear to make sure that we're meeting OSPI requirements and that then it sounds like the, then the afternoon hours are not self-guided hours, but then the more of a flip classroom model that was mentioned before, where the teacher is available as the students are doing application. So, I think there's just a lot of confusion there with what's counted for the hours. And I think we need to just to be very clear with the community of what is.
So, it's also what is, as I stated earlier, that's Ty's responsibility to make sure that we have those minutes calculated. They're calculated certainly by the one eighty days, but also by our school day. And you can see that our school day is full school day, even in the remote learning. So, when the plan was built, it was built with all of that criteria in mind because we knew that there was that expectation.
Yeah, I think it might be useful to, for each grade level, elementary, middle, and high school, to be clear about the hours of synchronous instruction, the hours of supported instruction, and then the hours of independent instruction. I think those are the three buckets we really have on each one of them. I mean, I, I did a cursory comparison against other districts and we're pretty much in line with them. So, I don't see any outliers. But those three buckets might be helpful, both from a parent, student, and teacher understanding as to where the involvement is.
If we're looking for, to give the superintendent direction from the board, this, it's going to be a larger conversation. My concern with doing this is, my concern with doing this is that it takes away from teaching time and administration work time. I think, I think that Donna explained the hours and days that are required by the state. And David, you just said that we seem to be in line with everyone. I think there's a misunderstanding with our generation. I'm going to lump all of us in, in our generation of teaching. When we went to school, we sat in rows and, and, and the teacher talked to us. And then maybe we're given a worksheet to do in class or a worksheet to do outside of class. That's not the way our classes are and it's not the way they've been for, for some time. So, when we go on site visits, we almost never see a teacher talking at their kids, especially at the elementary school level, actually at all of the levels. But, but with regards to elementary, you know, there's a very short, typically compact lesson. And then they're in groups, they're in learning groups there, whether it's a few students working directly with the teacher, a few students might be working with a para, and then other groups of students working on technology, other groups working through assignments together, and then sometimes students will be working individually. So, I think that that's the point with these hour-long block times is that, that us parents really need to learn what actually happens in classrooms. And I don't mean this in a condescending way. I didn't know this until I was on the board or I was volunteering in, in my daughter's classroom and was able to see the way that teachers are teaching these days. Middle school and high school, they're much more collaborative than they were when we were in school. And so, but that's not, not, that's not, and I know teachers have been using breakout times and Zooms for the older kids especially to continue that collaborative learning. We need to encourage them. They're shy about, you know, wanting to participate in a breakout lesson, just like I sometimes go and hide in my meetings or learning times when there's a breakout session. I admit, I don't always want to do that, but, but those are, that's all part of learning. And so, I think to be, for lack of a better phrase, nickel-and-diming teaching time is not doing anyone service. If we need to have some parent education about what today's classroom instruction looks like. And Donna and I, Donna, Maggie Tyke and I actually had this conversation yesterday. I think that that might be valuable, but, but I highly disagree with, with counting minutes.
Just, just to be, just to be clear, I think I was counting minutes from the schedule presented to us. I, I appreciate within a classroom, a multitude of things could happen to, to do in, in the process of learning. It could be groups of students working together while the teacher is helping somebody else. But just from the, which happens in every school district, just from the rudimentary schedule presented to us, I would qualify the first half of the day as synchronous learning effectively. Because at that point, it's guided by a teacher, the key teacher has full control over the classroom as to when people break out and when they don't. You know, and then teacher, office hours is, is, is more asynchronous. It's up to the student to engage with the teacher or not. And then independent study is, is, you know, expectations that during an ordinary day, a student would have been in school, but, and in the brick and mortar school rather, in our new model, that student is on their own to do homework or, or by themselves. So, it's at, at that very high level.
Brian?
I have a question on a different subject. In our, our, our plan that we have to submit to OSPI before opening, question number twenty-one talks about family and community engagement for families that are non-English speaking. And I think that might also translate to those families who may have special needs through the Individual Disabilities Act. What work is the district doing to ensure that these plans are being transmitted to those families?
So, for the ELL group, I'm going to look to Nova a little bit because she works with our ELL teachers who support those students. We have, whether or not we have them translated, isn't something that is completely viable for us. But we will be reaching out to, again, to those individual families as we work through this as to how the new model, the red learning is going to work. And then our ELL students go through an assessment process at the beginning of every year as well. And so, that will be something that our ELL teachers will be participating in. Nova?
Yeah, we are just planning that assessment process this afternoon because there's really no way around not doing it in person. So, parents will be communicated with soon about that. But our ELL students, we tried in the spring and very few parents wanted translations of anything. Rather, they just wanted to call someone to be able to ask the question or email someone to ask the question. So, we put a lot of that stuff in place. We already had it in place. Parents just didn't really use the phone lines. And so, email seemed to be a better option. So, we generated an email system that they were utilizing. There are a couple of other tools that we're looking at, kind of going forward with, but we have to have some conversation about like student privacy and things like that and records retention and all that good stuff. So, there's a, a lot of conversation being had in that regard. And then in terms of services, we're having conversations about how that looks right now, meeting with the different teams. So, I met with them today to talk a little bit about what services will look like and meeting with LSP and Title tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
I realize we're over time, but very quickly, this, the conversation before about the hours and what type of instruction syncs up really nicely with one of the questions that we received from a parent for the August eleventh meeting, which was just, as parents begin to plan how they're going to support their kids in the red learning phase, you know, what might be the most important part of the day for them to think about supporting their learners? And it's sounding like that early afternoon, that early afternoon period, because it's, it's more variable and it's more flexible, may be a time of day when it's more helpful to have, for the sort of like later elementary kiddos, you know, that it might be, that might be the time of day when, when a little more parent assistance is, is, would be useful. Is that, does that sound right to you guys who are planning this stuff?
On the high school schedule, Maggie, that sounds very reasonable. I think that's a fair, a fair and good way to approach that thought.
David?
I would just say that, you know, I know our teachers are going to be prepared to address their families right away. We won't wait for a curriculum night. I'm sure they'll be checking in and letting them know exactly how they can support them weekly and, and if things change. So, I would just wait for your teacher to connect. They're going to make real fast connections and they are there to, to do just that, to say here's, during each part of the day, here's how you can best support your child or whoever is watching their kids.
So, it, oh, Tam, go ahead.
Tying to Maggie Tyke about the instructional hours. And it does help for our parents to understand what is essentially required and what are kind of augment or supplemental learning. And so, I think we do need to be very clear about our expectations so that parents can help their students. And then I do have another question kind of tying to that is that I understand the logistic difficulties, right? In making sure that the needs of all of our educator staff and students are met. But given that we are starting in the red, with, even though we have some guidelines, but they're not really definite governmental or public health mandates, right? And given that Mercer Island do have more human and financial resources than other district, what are the challenges if, if we have agreements by the teachers and by the parents to incorporate more regular outside learning opportunities for students in the yellow-orange base?
Yeah, they're not requirements, but my understanding is that our insurance liability won't cover if we don't follow the recommendations. So, they're requirements unless the board wants to take that on, which I can't imagine we would. Brian, do you want to answer that in a different way?
That, no, but that was very specifically covered in today's COVID networking meeting through WASTA. So, if you want to check back in on that meeting, the executive director, Tim Gershaw, reached out to several of the insurance carriers. If a suit comes into the district and the district has chosen not to follow the guidelines and something has happened and a suit is filed, the insurance companies are going to take it on a case-by-case level as to whether or not they can support the legal aspects of that or whether they can cover those costs. So, essentially, if the district has chosen to not follow the guidance and something happens, the district may be liable for that entirely on their own. And to be very clear, if it doesn't come out of our risk fund, whatever, it, it comes out of our, our general fund. And so, that's, that's educational dollars that will be going to pay for the legal fees for that lawsuit and for anything that's paid out for that lawsuit. There's no other bucket that, that comes for that.
But I'm not saying that we're not following them. I'm just saying that right now, if you look at where their proposed educational model, we are really extreme on either all red and then, you know, jumping to the yellow mostly. But I feel like there is going to be a lot in the middle. And as we're thinking of this long-term and we're thinking about the sustainability of our students and we're thinking about being innovative and creative, you know, how do we, you know, how do we as a board support our educators to do a lot more in between? And if you look at the guidelines, it is not saying that we're going beyond those guidelines. But currently, what we have proposed so far is really, I guess, not a lot of, a lot of nuances in between. And I do think that during this time, how do we capitalize on some of more regular, you know, outdoor learning for our students, you know, throughout this next couple of months? So, I, I guess, you know, kind of thinking about the challenges for that and then.
So, it is, it is six forty-five. I think we could go for hours. So, at some point, I think I'm going to have to make the decision to cut this off. Maggie Tyke, I see you. Yeah.
Any question? I know that, that, that page in the presentation is going to be included in what's posted that explains the high versus moderate versus low risk level. But Donna, will you also be, be sharing the decision tree that came out from the state, which is very detailed with like what outdoor activities are allowed, that kind of thing? Will that be also posted for?
We will, we will link to the Department of Health's decision tree to also the K-12 Fall 2021 guidance. And it does currently link in the website to the Department of Health where it shows the high, medium, and low risk. And you can click on the county and find what the numbers are for that county and what range you're sitting in. So, we're going to have all those links live so that they'll be available for people to see what, what is the decision tree that we're using, what are the, where is our county right now in the numbers places? And just really quickly, I know you want to finish, President Larry. The orange model, when we talk hybrid, a lot of people think it means my kid goes, fifty percent of the kids go two days, fifty percent of the kids go another two days. The concern we have for that as a staff that we've tried to reiterate is that when our students are at home, the learning is, is very difficult because there isn't going to be a teacher contact for them because the teacher's in front of those fifty percent of the students who are there. So, if I only getting two days with my teacher in front of me, I have three days. That's basically even going to be difficult for asynchronous because we're now asking our teachers to teach both in a virtual setting, a remote setting, as well as an in-person. And that is really too much to ask of, of our, our teachers. And so, what we're doing with the orange is looking at how do we bring in our students? And frankly, at the high school level, we've heard clearly, some of our students are going to be very proficient in this red learning model and might not choose to come in, even if there's something that's really compelling for them. So, we're really going to be looking at serving groups of students, not just one-on-ones, but as we can bring in more students because it's safe, as we have staff availability for projects, for interventions, it will all be groups that will be set up through our staff in support, with the administration supporting. What are those groups going to look like? What are the projects they're going to be working on? Will some of it be outdoors? Absolutely. We're going to try and utilize our outdoor space as much as we can. But there are even guidelines in the Department of Health regulations of outdoor space, that it's cohorts, that you can't clean the equipment. So, there's still a lot of restrictions and regulations that we have to be cognizant about, even when we're in an outdoor space. Sorry, President Larry. No, that's okay. And I'm, I'm trying really hard not to be flippant in terms of the timing. We have, everyone has a hundred and three questions and then tomorrow they're going to have a hundred and three more questions. And the fact of the matter is because this is something we've never done before. And it's really going to be hard until we get into it to get a feel for how it's working. And I think that the, I'm confident with the administration's intention to continue the learning forward teams, to continue meeting and adapting and evolving as we see how our students' needs are met. So, it's not, all of these questions are valid concerns. One thing that we really work hard for our students to, or to teach, especially in elementary school, is resiliency. And we know that kids who are resilient are the most successful. Us parents are much less resilient than our kids. Our kids are going to be fine. Is this what we want for them? Absolutely not. Not a chance. This sucks, right? We all want to be back together. We want to be dropping our kids off at school on September 2nd. We want to be in person and frankly, we, you know, parents don't want to deal with their kids all day, for the most part. I'm being flippant, but, but this is not what any of us are looking for, for this year. So, in order to get back to normal, I would encourage everyone to take responsibility in our community in terms of wearing their own mask and making sure that especially our teenagers are wearing their masks. I can't tell you how many I am seeing out there and it's killing me not to be yelling at them, but I'm not, I'm behaving, who are not wearing their masks. And that is what's going to get us back to as much of a normal as possible. I know we're going to continue enough questions, but those questions are best going to be answered once we have some experience about what our students and, and parents are experiencing. So, talking. So talking about it ahead of time, I just think is raising everyone's anxiety level. It certainly raises mine. And we, one other thing that I just want to say is, is just a reminder, if you have questions that you feel like haven't been answered, please submit them to the board email address by Monday of five, so we can go through them and make sure we're answering them at our linkage session on Tuesday. Unfortunately, we've been trying to figure out a way we could do some back and forth at that. And it's just in this setting, it's just, we, we cannot think of a productive way to do that. Keep in mind, please, that our teachers and staff and administrators are part of our community. They see what's written on Nextdoor and on Facebook. And it is really, really difficult to be talked about and put down, even in a very general sense. We know that we have the best and most committed teachers and staff, frankly, of any district around. That's what, why we're all here. So let's remember that when we're making comments. It doesn't mean you don't have questions and concerns. But let's remember that when we're making questions or asking questions and making comments, assume best intent because we all want to make this work for everyone. So I am adjourning us. It's six fifty-one.
Wait, Deborah, can I, so there got to be a way before, I'm sorry, before you adjourn, I mean, there are board members, we do, part of our work right here is to give feedback and we all care and feedback is really.
You can continue to provide feedback, Superintendent.
So should we write to the superintendent and then is it going to be a podcast to everybody to know what, how, what the board members?
So you have, no, you as an elected official have a responsibility to make sure that your concerns are alleviated. And you do that by contacting Superintendent Klosky if in this setting, your questions haven't been answered. She might just be making a different decision than you think is best and that's okay. The superintendent is in charge of operations and she can make that decision as long as the board believes that it's within the policies of our district. Our meeting on August thirteenth, the, the plan will be officially presented and the board will be voting on whether or not to approve it. But again, the vote is, it's tough because we are a policy governance district where operations is purely in the role of the superintendent and her team. So if it's a, I, I'm not sure how else to explain it.
I guess I, I do need to, a certain kind of level of information in order to make an informed vote and.
What information do you not think you're getting?
I do think we need to have very more clear, or at least, you know, I have written out kind of standards, criteria of what, how do we move between phases? I think that we need to have more clarity on, you know, the instructional hours, if, how we are meeting with, for me, OSPI's current requirement. I, for me, I need to be more clear about the red option for those who are health compromised and not, you know, at the very last, because I really feel that is the crux of our, when we talk about free and basic education. This is another group of students for the upcoming year who are compromised or a family who have health compromised issues that we can't just, you know, push them on to an asynchronous model, right? And we can't say that we can only offer you a red model if there is enough student, if there is enough students to necessitate a teacher. So I really think that it's really the basic of when we talk about free and basic education for me, for students who are, you know, during this time, how do they also get access to synchronous education? And I do believe we have the resources for it, right? And so with that, I, I, I think we need to be more clear on certain, for, for me, to make a better informed decision. And it's not about policy, you know, otherwise I feel like we're rubber stamping, we're just doing this process. But whatever comes out, if you're just saying that we're just leaving it there, then I would be comfortable, right? To, even though it is a superintendent's decision to make the, to make the final determination, but then we also, if we're voting on it, that means that we have to see if we're comfortable with that to meet our standards and expectation of providing the best quality education for all of our students. And so somewhere, whether it's through an FAQ or whatever, I think those things need to be addressed.
Brian?
Very briefly, I just want to say thank you to the staff, thank you to the superintendent and everyone involved in putting together tonight's presentation. I was playing bingo with the Washington Schools 2020 reopening plan template, which is downloadable. It's in our agenda here tonight. And I personally am quite confident that you've covered all the bases. While there's still fine tuning and polished to be put on the plan, I think you've demonstrated that you've taken into account all of the questions in this report that needs to be filed. And so I want to really appreciate how thorough you were and how much information you really did provide for us tonight. I know it's a lot of hard work from everyone in the administration, all of our side administrators. I want to say I so appreciate all of your hard work and dedication for all of our teachers. I think you're doing an amazing job and I'm really proud of you and for the work that you're doing on behalf of our students.
I'm not usually speechless. I'm not, I, I don't, I don't know how to move forward. So I'm adjourning this meeting and I think that there's information out there and I, I'm not sure what else to do. So I wanted to end this on a positive note. Thank you, Brian, for trying to bring it back there. But, but, but we do all appreciate the hours and hours and hours of work in creating a brand-new educational system that none of us have experienced before. And we will continue to have this dialogue and we will have our linkage session on Tuesday and then we will have our regular board meeting on Thursday. Thank you all.